Ideas in Nigeria and beyond. So today we have a number of speakers who are joining us with the theme today with its own impunity, reforms and reactionaries for a just society. As human beings, we are all constantly seeking to live in a society whereby the governed and those who are governing, of course, have a mutual understanding how democracy or governance is being carried out. But sadly, the continent or maybe the country that we came from, that seems to be alien to quite a number of us. So this topic, as a matter of fact, is pertinent. It's centered on, I would like to say that again, impunity, reforms and reactionaries for a just society. And we have a number of speakers here with us today. First, we have Cornell Hassan Stan Lambo. He is a retired Cornell with immense operational experience. He's a defense security consultant and an in-house analyst to major media houses and defense research organizations across the world. Cornell Hassan Stan Lambo is a former military defense officer of the Nigerian army, a social security, I mean, a security consultant and political analyst. And of course, we have Ms. Yemi Adama Molekun. She is the executive director of Enough is Enough. She campaigns for better governance in Nigeria. She is also a senior associate in the Center for Strategic and International Studies. Yemi has a 20-year diverse career spanning the public and private sector in the U.S. and of course, the U.S., that's the United States, and of course, in Nigeria. So we also have Oluwashiwo Aneku Laku Kuti, who will be joining us pretty soon, is known by many as Sheu Kuti. So Sheu is a musician, for those who do not know, and is a singer and the youngest son of the famous Afrobeat pioneer Fela Aneku Laku Kuti. So Sheu comes from a long family line of human rights activists. His father, the legendary Afrobeat pioneer, is a political activist and a Pan-Africanist. His grandmother, Fumlaia Ransom Kuti, I'm sure that name resonates with a whole lot of us, is an educationist, a politician, and a women's rights activist, who during the 1940s established the Abekuta Women's Union and fought for women's rights, sparing the creation of the Frederick ... work as a human rights activist. And that pool, they say, never falls far from the tree. So Sheu has also taken part in major political rallies in Nigeria as a human rights activist. And like I said, family line of human rights activists. And of course, our final speaker for tonight, I mean, sorry, for today, is Mr. Alumide Apata. So that's the, he is the president of the Nigerian Bar Association, is a senior partner of the head of corporate and commercial practice group at the Templus Law Firm in Nigeria. Mr. Apata became the first non-senior advocate of Nigeria precedent of the Nigerian Bar Association in July 2020. As a legal practitioner, Mr. Apata has been instrumental to achieving some of the major groundbreaking transactions that have shaped commercial law practice in Nigeria and indeed the Nigeria economy. So I say welcome to all of our speakers. And of course, before I open the floor for them to speak, we would like to welcome the president of the National Association of Sea Dogs, that's the NAS Capone, Mr. Abiola Owaje for his opening remarks.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I hope you can all hear me. Thank you very much for taking time out to attend these very important conversations that we intend to have today on this WS Digital Town Hall. Distinguished guest speakers, Mr. Alumide Apata, President Nigerian Bar Association, Cornell Hassan Stan Lambo, retired security expert. This is Yemi, Ms. Yemi Adama Molekun, executive director of Enough is Enough. Mr. Sheu Kuti, social activist and multi-instrumentalist. Our moderator, Ms. Rose Peter Graham, multi-award-winning international broadcaster. Gentlemen of the press, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, good afternoon. It gives me great pleasure to welcome you to the National Association of Sea Dogs Pirate Confraternity WS Digital Town Hall with the theme impunity, reforms, and reactionaries for a just Nigeria. As an organization founded by the Nobel laureate Professor Wole Soyinka and six other patriots in the 1952-1953 session at the University College Ibadan, town in Westfield, Ibadan, to fight for the weak and the voiceless, we have not failed in adding our voices to issues of good governance in pursuit of a just and egalitarian society. This lofty objective was one of the driving forces behind the idea of the Wole Soyinka annual lecture series started in 1994. The lecture series over the years has been able to attract the best brains in Nigeria, Africa, and the world. Eminent personalities that have graced the lecture series include Chief Rotimi Williams, Rare Admiral Indubisi Cannon, Alaji Balarabe Musa, Professor Bionju Jefo, Bishop Matthew Kuka, Dr. Robin Rainey Saunders, Ambassador Stanley Lars Kamanzi, among others. The WS Digital Town Hall conceptualized in 2012 as WS Digital Dialogue and Christian with the initials of Wole Soyinka is an offshoot of the annual lecture series created as an intellectual platform and a melting point of ideas for young men and women making great impact in their communities. The idea of WS Digital Town Hall is a reflection of the intellectual vigor of our organization with the overall objective to stimulate robust discourse, to advance good governance and social change in the attainment of a just society. We have therefore chosen the theme impunity, reforms, and reactionaries for a just Nigeria to continue the conversation on police brutality and need for police reforms started by the N-SARS movement. Many Nigerians concerned about the presentness with which the now disbanded dreaded Special and Robbery Squad, SARS, operated, were proud of Nigerian youths who took the bull by the horn to initiate the genuine protests that swept across Nigeria three weeks ago against unchecked police cruelty, intimidation, harassment, and extrajudicial killings. As an organization, just like many other Nigerians, we have been victims of brutality in the hands of the police and other security agencies. In fact, the same UGELI in Delta State where Joshua Ambrose was harassed and almost killed on the 3rd of October 2020, provoking the national outrage that snowballed into N-SARS protests, policemen shot six members of our association in cold blood on Christmas Eve, 24th of December 1983. Namely, Kestha Sobote, Joseph Olloho, Victor Oyailo, Anthony Omako, Bernard Obi, and Princeley Otayi. They were all students of various tertiary institutions when they were murdered. Thirty-seven years after, we are yet to get justice, and the killer policemen have simply vanished into thin air, perhaps only freaked by their not staying conscious. In 1995, members of our association in Portacot River State and Enugu in present-day Enugu state were not spared as Nigerian police and other security agencies acting under the instructions of the late tyrant General Sonny Abacha, clammed down into torture chambers because of our role in the fight for democracy after the June 12, 1993 elections through the formation of Radio Kudarat and Naricom. If some of us are alive to tell the story, many others
It was a turbulent fortnight.
This list includes 24-year-old Nigerian athlete Indubisi Dele Udo, killed by policemen in 1981, the Apollo Six, Ifeanyozor, Chiledu Meneru, Augustina Arebu, Anthony Owokike, Polinos Obuna, and Kenne Isaac Umbe, amongst others. Chidjoke Ilohania, Colade Johnson, Samani Zagun, Ayomide Taibo, and Ephoma Agogo. The long list also includes 82 cases of torture, ill treatment, and extrajudicial killing by SARS between January 2017 and May 2020, as vividly captured by Amnesty International in its latest report. Time to end impunity. One is therefore forced to ask what sort of society ours is, where citizens are afraid of the police and by extension, other security agencies paid to protect them? Why are police so brutal and arbitrary? Why has it been so difficult to bring every police personnel to book the detriment to misconduct? Why has the federal government and the police hierarchy been so dishonest about undertaking comprehensive police reform even after repeatedly promising to do so? Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, these germane questions are begging for answers as the N-SARS protests took center stage. But rather than answer the questions, the political establishment, in its typical behavior, responded with its knee-jerk methods, culminating the shocking shooting of innocent peaceful protesters at Leckito Gate on Tuesday 20th of October 2020. The questions on unbridled impunity call for reforms and attempts by certain forces to prevent a just society. This town hall discourse is an organization's contribution to the national conversation. The array of distinguished Nigerians we have in our midst as speakers demonstrates our resolve to help at their country Nigeria. Ultimately, we believe these speakers would equally help in charting a way forward. Once again, welcome. Thank you for your rapid attention.
Thank you very much. And that's the capone of the National Association of Sea Dogs, the Pirate Confraternity, Mr. Abiola Owaje. So before we go, just a fortnight ago, a potent mix of street protests and social media, we would say, has given the Nigerian youth the voice that shattered the country's culture of difference. I do not think that after what happened, that the Nigerian government would see everything that they do as business as usual. And given to the names that the NAS Capone read out, I would like to say that we remember them and those who lost their lives, those who were injured, we do remember them and our hearts goes out to their families and their friends. At this juncture, I would like to call on our first speaker to take the floor. But before then, I would like to reiterate that the objectives of the Wole Soyinka Digital Town Hall, I mean, is to identify root causes of impunity and obstacles to its reduction and of course, to share knowledge on the enhancement and expansion of efforts to overcome legacies of violence and impunity. And also to identify possible bottom-up actions and ideals towards supporting local and grassroots justice initiatives, facilitating stakeholders' access to policy-making. Okay, so I would like for you to welcome with me Cornell Hassan Stan Lambo, a former military defense officer of the Nigerian army, a social, I mean, a security consultant and a policy analyst. So you're welcome. The floor is yours. Okay, I guess we might be having certain challenges with his, is he speaking? He's still muted. Sir, can you kindly unmute yourself if you can hear me? You are muted, yes. That's it. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Very well, sir. Go ahead.
All right. I'm really sorry. Thank you, thank you. So maybe I should start all over.
Definitely.
Mr. Chairman, members of the organizing committee, my fellow participants here, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. First and foremost, let me start by saying I feel honored by your decision to have me here as a guest speaker on this occasion of the Wole Soyinka Lecture Series. The theme of this dialogue wouldn't have been any better than this at a time when we are at a crossroads over the future of our country, coming on the heels of a very devastating period in our national history as a nation, when the trust coefficient between the government and the government is on the nose side, it only becomes imperative that we begin to interrogate the very issues that confront us as a nation, be they impunity, be they lack of institutional reforms, corruption, ethnicity, tribalism, and what have you. The U.S. Department of State's 2018 Human Rights Report on Nigeria did observe, and I quote, "The failure at incapability of the Nigerian government to investigate and punish both state and non-state actors accused of human rights violations in the country has led to the entrenchment of abuses such as torture, illegal detention, human trafficking, and sexual exploitation," end of quote. I must say that governments after governments have not been able to galvanize the political will to identify and prosecute perpetrators of rights abuses despite passing laws and legislations to check these violations. Oftentimes, steps are taken to investigate alleged abuses, but of course, fewer attempts are prosecuted such official. Notable amounts, I mean, notable examples are to be found in nearly all institutions of government, be it the police, be it the military, or civil servants. Impunity therefore remains widespread at all levels within our country and even within the government itself. Reports of arbitrary and unlawful killings emanating from applications of lethal and excessive force to disperse protesters or apprehend criminals or in the treatment of persons under custody are also sometimes investigated, but findings are hardly made public. These are government-backed impunity and examples also abound for these claims. Maybe a few examples suffice here. In 2017, the then-acting president, Professor Osibandjo, set up an investigative panel to review the compliance of armed forces with the human rights obligations and rules of engagement. Though the panel submitted its reports in February 28
Sir, please, can you unmute yourself?
... impunity has to do with the civilian drug act force. This is a Borunos state financed militia working closely with the military in the ongoing And the notice, the militia group was accused of human rights violations by their engagement of child soldiers in the field. This accusation was neither investigated nor the leadership of the group held wanting. I must say that impunity tests us not because of lack of appropriate laws to prosecute, but because in most cases, the laws are rendered redundant for lack of a political will to use it. Some of these laws are to be found inherent in our constitution, that's the constitution of the Federal Republic, the administrative and administration of our Criminal Justice Act 2015, and the Anti-Torture Act 2017. The lawyers amongst us here would quickly understand what I'm referring to. All three references define and specifically criminalized torture with due sanctions to offenders and those who aid or abet it. However, the administration of Criminal Justice Act fails to prescribe penalties for violators. It is important to note also that while the Anti-Torture Act of 2017 prohibits the use of evidence and confessions obtained from torture, the Special Anti-Robbery Squad, the popular SARS, continually engaged, I mean, engaged in the extraction of confessions by torture for the purpose of prosecution of suspects. All formal representations to the false hierarchy on these violations by civil society organizations and other stakeholders yielded nothing. It was always met with promises of reforms, we shall reform the SARS, we shall reform the SARS. I think we've had about four different promises in the past few years upon, I mean, concerning the reform, the upcoming reforms in SARS. The widespread abuse continued all through 2016 into 2017, when citizens began a social media campaign, N-SARS, to document physical abuse and extortion by SARS officers and demand the disbarment of the unit. A quick look at the arrogance of the political elite and how it impacts on us as a society. Arrogance and impunity runs through the veins of the political elites, elite class in this country, and this has impacted negatively on this society. At no other area in the democratic development of our nation has the political elite demonstrated so much impunity in governance as in the conduct of our elections. Elections were often so manipulated without recourse to electoral laws so that the results could hardly pass any integrity test. Today, the entire world is faced with the coronavirus pandemic. The entry of this disease into Nigeria and the subsequent spread all over the country is simply horrific and remains a function of the recklessness and arrogance of the country's political elite. Gentlemen and ladies, we are all living witnesses of how Abakari violated all rules in respect of COVID-19. Even at death, his burial was conducted in outright disregard to NCDC COVID-19 mandatory regulatory protocol. I believe that leaders, whether political, social, or religious, should lead by example. Rather than serve as role models to the younger generation, it is yet the same political elite who flaunt court orders, resists court summons, loots the treasury, and manipulates elections using same resources to enthrone themselves back to power and influence. A quick look at institutional reforms, which I think have become very much necessary today. The situation like it presently stands calls for major reforms in our institution. If they must be restored to past glories or mixed global best practices, for instance, in any attempt at reforms of the Nigerian police today, it must take a holistic form and all encompassing, touching every segment of the organization. For total reforms to be achieved in the police, five major areas of channeling common to all agencies within the security sector must be addressed. They include manpower, funding, logistics and equipment, training, and welfare. Proper modalities or appropriate implementation plan should be articulated, spelling out redefined job descriptions, timelines for executions, milestones, key performance index, and of course, required funding source. In addition to the above, I strongly recommend the following. A, introduction of state police structure by decentralizing the Nigerian police. B, introduction of community policing with a view to enhance citizen participation and ownership of the police. C, disengagement of the police from VIP protection duties to regular policing duties to enhance unavailable manpower. G, encourage VIPs and corporate bodies to self-security outlets from the private security sector to reduce workload on the police. E, recruit more hands into the Nigerian police to alleviate current manpower challenges. F, maintain a 1 million man strength police force in view of Nigeria's landmass and population. Finally, G, revisit the statutory provisions for welfare and motivation of the police force. It is my belief that our deliberations in the course of the interactive session that follows here immediately will bring about value and serve to enrich available pool of solution to addressing the issues of impunity and reforms in our society. Thank you very much, and once more, I appreciate you and I feel honored being in your midst. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, sir. We do appreciate you taking time to join us on this August occasion. And yes, your speech is quite, is in-depth and definitely, I do believe that once this goes live, you know, like usually for those of, those who are just joining us, this discussion it doesn't end here because the communiqu of presentations will be released to the public and this dialogue will be on several social media platforms where the discussion continues. And as a matter of fact, if you see what, having us talking about issues like this brought about two weeks ago. And I would like to say a very big thank you to Cornell Hassan Stan Lambo. So for those of us who don't know, he's a retired Cornell with the Nigerian army, so former military defense officer of the Nigerian army, is a security consultant and a policy analyst. Yes, sir, thank you very much. And of course, when all of us speakers are done speaking, the floor will be open for comments and reactions. And at this point, I would like to welcome Ms. Yemi Adama Molekun. And like I mentioned before, she is the executive director of Enough is Enough, and she campaigns for better governance in Nigeria. Madam, thank you very much for also joining us. The floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Can I ask that you skip and come back to me? Some construction work going in my house. I need to get them to stop because it's quite loud. So I will be back.
Okay, madam, thank you very much. We acknowledge that. Okay, so if I can move on to our next speaker. If our next speaker is available for us, that is Oluwashiwo Aneku Laku Kuti. Do we have Sheu with us? If we, if we do not, may I have certain, can I have reaction because the Cornell is still with us? Can I have reaction to the speech you just gave? Comments and reaction, please do indicate by raising up your hands. And may I please ask that we all remain muted if we are not speaking? Thank you very much. Hands raised, yes. Obogu Undukar, please, can you go ahead? Let me hear you. Obogu Undukar. No, Undukwai, sorry, apologies. Yes, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I really appreciate the organizer putting this up. I listened to the first speaker. I am, I am in tune with the police in Nigeria, and I'm wondering, yeah, he said we should increase the police trains to a million, at least in Nigeria, and then we just have a little over 300,000. And then we just have a little over three hundred thousand and their remuneration is what it is. A police officer does not have adequate provisions to, to do his daily duties. He's not there, his welfare package is very poor, training is very uh poor and all those things. So how, how are we going to get a million officers on the streets? That's, that's, that's my first question. And two, uh he talked about state policing, which will be a solution. He proposed a solution to what we have now. I'm asking, is it to have give a state governors also control to be able to contribute people further? Because we are seeing a situation where a state governor can be able to do a whole lot, even with the vigilante services that they have around. Now, there's a lot of impunity going on in Nigeria. Would state policing in the, in the hands of the wrong people be the solution to our problems? It is my right abuses. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Obobu Undukwé. Um can I have another person, please? Can I have another question? So I would like for him to take them together. I'm not seeing hands raised. Sir, can you please weigh in? Cornell?
Yes, yes, yes. Thank you so much. I appreciate.
Policing in Nigeria. Yes, sir. Please go ahead.
Yeah, uh Miss Andukwé, thank you so much. I do understand where you're headed for. Um you want to know how we can, you know, get the police strength to a million, you know? Uh you feel it's maybe a bit difficult, given the fact that um the welfare situation with the police force as it is right now, isn't anything to write from about? First and foremost, I must say this. Given our landmass in the country, given our population of two hundred million. I know the U N talks about, um I think one policeman to, is it three eighty men? Looking at the peculiarity of our own situation, I think we need to shoot up beyond that three eighty men. So that we can accommodate enough or have enough policemen to address issues on ground. How do we expand on the current strength? I have done quite an extensive work on this, on how we could expand on the manpower holding within the security sector. Looking at the armed forces and of course the paramilitary. In the paramilitary, I looked at the police. We can expand on our training schools in the police as it is presently. Expand and enhance on the conditions in the training school. Because the condition under which you train too, either brings you out as a beast or brings you out as a human being. We are all living witnesses of what, I mean, other uh his excellency, uh the former president, good luck. How we have to all renovate the, 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 the legacy Kedja Police College. After journalists went in there and discovered certain terrible conditions under which you were training. Well, the point I'm trying to make is that we should expand on the number of training institutions for the police. Currently, we have only two or three. And I think the number of policemen they turn out annually is so minimal. Even the ten thousand which the president has just authorized, that we should be training on an annual basis, I doubt who can meet that. So we have to expand on the schools. There are a lot of instructors that are retired, just as we have in the armed forces. There are a lot of instructors, police instructors that are retired, but still everybody that can be brought into man some of these schools. And then one other important aspect, given our recent uh uh experience with what we've seen with S.A.S. and so on. It means that training in the police has to be redefined, all right, to bring in a lot of um do I say cultured? So at the end of the day, the policeman is a cultured man when he comes out. He's able to relate with the society when it comes out and so on. So if we expand on existing facilities, we can meet the one million mark, all right? Secondly, we must accept that the police is underfunded. Entirely, I would say, the entire military, I mean, uh defense and security sector is underfunded. I was delivering a paper a few days back at uh the army resource center in Abuja. And I was telling them about the U S budget for its armed forces. Which runs into over six hundred billion uh uh dollars. And how much have we voted for our armed forces here in the last, in the twenty twenty one uh 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 budget? Barely a hundred and something. So at the end of the day, and I'm talking of a hundred and something in terms of dollars, why the U S is talking of about how many billion, I mean, how many trillions? So the point is that we must be ready to invest in security. And the police is one aspect which should even come first before the armed forces. Because of the internal security role they play, I hope we are all aware that I S or internal security is entirely the police responsibility. The armed forces is only called in in assistance or in aid of civil authority. It's not actually the responsibility of the armed forces, even though in this climate, we have abused it completely. Because our entire environment is militarized. So at every little thing, we pull out the armed forces. It's wrong. We kept bringing out the armed forces or we keep bringing out the armed forces because we are short in terms of manpower with the police. We should beef up manpower. We should unlock enough funding. We should address the welfare issues within the police. Which is far, far below par. Thank you, please.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. And all done, and I think there's someone else who has a question for Ross. The floor is yours. You can unmute yourself. Akintaya Sumonro.
Okay, uh good, good afternoon, everyone.
Yes, good afternoon.
Okay, yeah, uh Cornell Hassan has spoken well. I think the issue with uh our government is that we have not prioritized the police welfare and funding. Uh, police, you see these people, they mount roadblocks and they keep complaining that it is the money they realize from those uh roadblocks that they used to run their station. You will see DSS without mounting any roadblock. They run their offices efficiently with adequate funding. Why are we not funding the uh police in that uh manner? Also, on the issue of a police infrastructure. What are we doing above police uh infrastructure, like building of a, a police stations and uh operational ve- vehicles for the uh police? I would also want to use the example of the armed forces and the DSS. You hardly see uh the army, the navy or the air force or the DSS going to patronize private individuals or companies to come and build stations for them, to come and do this for them. It is also, it is also something we need to uh uh consider i- in repositioning uh the police to do their jobs efficiently. Also, on the issue of a, a police promotion, I don't know how it is obtainable. But I know that for you to rise in the army or in the navy or in the air force. There are some certain uh criterias you need to meet before you rise from corner to brigade. From brigade to major general, from major general to lieutenant uh general. But in police, you see someone who, who, who two years ago was a commissioner of police. And two years down the line, he has risen to become a D I G. That kind of person does not have the
You got a question there because I would have to cut you shut at this time, Mr. Akintaya. Thank you very much. I'm sure you, you've made your point. Sir, I would love for you to respond to that. If you can do that in two minutes. We'll be glad because Madame Yemi is back with us, so we could have her give our papers. Thank you very much, Mr. Akintaya. I mean, yes, Mr. Akintaya Sumon, thank you very much. Thank you. So, sir, please respond, two minutes.
Uh uh there is no response. He has not really asked any question. I think he was just contributing to the ongoing discourse. And he made a few points which were noted. There was no question really.
Oh, oh, fantastic, beautiful. So at this point, I would like to call on Miss Yemi Adamolekun. She is the executive director of Enough is Enough. She campaigns for better governance in Nigeria. Madam, thank you very much for joining us. The floor is yours.
Thank you. And again, my apologies for having to step away. Um I really don't have a paper, but I just wanted to share some thoughts about the N S A S protest. And I guess in the context of the, the theme for this event. It's for us, impunity reforms and reactionary is for a just society. Um. I guess, I mean, people say, what was it about N S A S that got people triggered? Across socioeconomic strata, across, across the country. Well, for the most part, um a lot of northern Nigeria didn't participate because their lived reality is different. And I, and I don't think they should be blamed for that. If S.A.S. has never jacked me up, I don't see why um I would have the same type of passion. But what is interesting though, and I guess this is really where I'm going, is that S.A.S. might not have jacked you up. But bandits are killing and raping women, Bokaram killing and women, um some army group, uh we've seen by their, by their attacks on the governor of, of Bonu. So if the general conversation is around the inability of the state to protect its citizens, that everybody across the country should have joined in the, in the protest. But as we've seen in the days and weeks that have followed, the framing of it as a campaign for regime change, I find quite laughable. And then the northern governors deciding that social media in the grand scheme of all the things they have to deal with, it's also laughable. So N S A S was a trigger um for the, that happened in Ugele Delta, for the young man that didn't end up that wasn't shot by S.A.S. But for those interesting events, which I kind of believe is divine, triggered a reaction that then spanned into protest over two weeks. Then you go into the conversation of a leaderless movement. Well, it was a movement that wasn't planned. It was a movement that didn't have someone sitting in a room and saying, let's do this. But across the country, because there was a shared lived experience of a police officer saying, I will shoot you and nothing will happen. Of people staring down the barrel of a gun and not seeing this once, not twice, not over and over again, and police get away scot-free. Um to the commonest position, are they underpaid? Most definitely. Are the conditions deplorable? Most definitely. Um Channel's television did a uh an invest couple of years ago and showed the conditions of service by no stretch of imagination is ideal. And I'm, and I doubt that anybody says that it is. But it is not a license to kill. And within the context of our society and, and what we're talking about in terms of impunity. You give someone a, you don't give them proper conditions of service. They take their gun as a license to kill, to maim and to harass, and then nothing happens. Here who's a parent and has a child, I have eight good children. If you allow a child to do something bad and there are no repercussions, the child will continue because in a sense, your silence is constant. So the way the police structure force has been structured over the years is that impunity is the order of the game, order of the day rather. And we saw that again, even this period when S.A.S. was dissolved. Again, impunity. Over the last five years, something has happened to S.A.S. every single year. It was reorganized, it was true, it was disbanded. Uh they were supposed to go for training and then this year was dissolved. But Nigerians, by the time all this information got out and it started, I'm not sure that a lot of people realized that. But again, by the, with the power of, once the protest started, all this information was a tweet from Mr. President from last year, asking for a panel to get back to him within on reform, was brought out. Did anything happen? No. And so by the time they dissolved S.A.S. and the announcement was made, and both the I G of police expected and the president expected everybody to be like, oh, wonderful, they've dissolved S.A.S. People were like, no, not this time. You're not just going to, we want to, as they said, show your workings. Now, two things then happened that I think are quite significant. One, again, this whole journey about impunity. On the same day that S.A.S. was supposedly dissolved, the police in Abuja shot at, water bombed and tear gassed peaceful protesters. Nothing happened. The I G of police said nothing. So nobody was held responsible. Nobody was, even if you made one person escape good for that, nothing happened. So I don't know how that will be going on in one direction. And then you are expecting you to say, because you dissolved S.A.S., all of us should go back to being at peace. Second thing that happened was that they said, okay, we've dissolved S.A.S. Now we have SWAT. Okay, again, the beauty of social media, newspaper articles and links started coming up that we've had SWAT, at least that I know, since twenty fourteen. It could be older, I don't have a bother to check. The most important bit was as of this year, when you said you dissolved S.A.S. and have SWAT. SWAT already existed. Again, you provided no information around what that meant. Is it that you're adding them to the existing SWAT team? Is it that the existing SWAT team is dead and nothing? Just expected us to take it that we're working. So I think the, the, the sequence of those events spoke very clearly that the government did not have any intention to do anything. So they were not interested in solving the problem. They just wanted the problem to go away. That was what they were interested. But unfortunately for them, citizens were just not quite happy yet. And that's why it was really easy, I would say, um relatively easy for citizens across the country to just leave to this singular call. And it then was clear that it wasn't just saying it. We wanted to see how you planned to do this. Because again, N S A S really was a symbol of police reform. And if you look at the five for five demands that government has accepted, number five on that demand was improved police welfare. Because there's also clarity, they can't ref- change the type of police force that we have without in, in improving their welfare. Their training is rubbish because they're not trained to be human. They're trained from the, the reason why you had police in the first place. In a country like Nigeria, even in the U S, if you look at it, the history of policing is a, is a structure to suppress. It's a su- structure to oppress. It's a structure to contain. These are not trained to be friends. They're not trained to de-escalate situations. They're not trained to have conversations. They're not trained to look at what the issues are and try to solve a problem. They are trained to intimidate, to instill fear, to harass. And in Nigeria, we've added extortion and rape. Unnecessarily, jailing unnecessarily to their list of things that they do. So if we're not clear, we think, which is why one of the demands was psychological evaluation. If we're not clear that we need to rethink the type of person that goes into the police, impunity is a given. It just, it comes with the package. You don't need to do anything special. It comes with the package. And in that, in that as well, you then look at our police force, well, a significant number of policemen um bag carriers, door openers, they don't do any policing. They're just glorified P in a uniform with a gun. Now, every year, I would say, everyone, I'm not say every year, every new I G announces that there shall be no, um policemen can no longer provide um private service or whatever it is they call it to citizens. But we know that's not true. Yet, if I want ten Mopou in my house today, if I have money, I'll be sure. So if as a force, we allow the men of the force to be so debased work that they do, well, I mean, we're human beings, our minds and our hearts are living organs. They are living organs, so they take in information and they adapt accordingly. So if you debase human beings, whose work should be a place of pride? That they are protecting citizens and protecting the country, and you turn them into carrying bags, pulling out gear for madam, opening door for madam. And you then worry, there is, think about the results you get. We, we shouldn't be surprised. And then to call, call on Hassan's point about us being under policed and we need more police, without a shadow of a doubt. The type of people that you will get, who want to suck, the, the, the type of people in your police force are not the type of people who will sign up for your police force, given the current structure. So it's, your humanity is debased as a police officer. And where you, so your conditions of service are quite poor. Ending does not, there's an English word for this, does not encourage the type of person I want to see as my policeman to want to join the service. The person that would invariably want to join the The person that would invariably want to join the service, if we call it impunity, is someone who really just wants the an official, what's the English word? The, um, the official stamp, the official endorsement to do rubbish. If you're wearing a police, uh, police uniform, you can pretty much get away with things. And so it's the state that basically enforces your bad behavior. And I'll round up by talking about the notion of N S A's protester. So I, I, I say all of that to say that the impunity that we have is designed into the system. So anything that's cosmetic, that doesn't really take apart the, the type of police we want and the structure of their training and how they engage, we will still have the same problems that we do. And from where I sit today, I still don't see that in the comments from the Ministry of Police Affairs, nor from the IG of police. And lastly, I want to end with this whole notion of peaceful protesters turned violent protesters. I'm sorry, they're two complete groups of people. And it's not a matter of hijacking. It's a matter of with the complicit actions of the state. The state apparatus in either a serving politician or the police, members of the police force, engage thugs to disrupt a peaceful protest. And after they have done that, and mayhem, then people start behaving badly. And then the police force steps away from policing and just in a sense folds their arms and becomes spectators. What we saw is what will happen. And that should not be blamed on any protest style, protest or N S A's protest, anything tied to N S A's or the protest. And we've also gotten reports of police officers saying, eh, you don't want police like this, we will show you. So with that type of attitude and the way, especially in Lagos that I can speak to, where they are now supposedly rounding up looters and beating them, and in some case we have a possible case of an extrajudicial killing, it tells you where we are. And in all of this that's happening, the IG of police has not said a word, not a word. So within that context, is expected. But what we then need to do to move that forward is for citizens seeing what has happened in the last three weeks, to be very clear that the terms of engagement of a democracy is not what we have. Some have called it quasi-military, some have called it a police state. But when your military decides that peaceful protesters, the way to disband them is to open fire, we know we have a problem. And as citizens, we need to begin to engage with that understanding, that this is not the terms of engagement of a democracy. And if we want that to happen, we need to be clear about what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madame Yemi Adama Leukum. I hope you're still with us because we're going to post the questions now. And Ralph Ibekwe, you, I've been seeing your hands up. Um, I'm going to allow you to ask your question pretty soon, but I would just like to let our audience know that opportunity is now open for you to put your questions through or make contribution. And please, you have one minute to do that. Let us be concise and precise as much as we can. So, um, Ralph Ibekwe, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much, everyone. Uh, basically, um, most of these issues we've been having about, uh, both N S A's and everything, they're not far-fetched. All of them are revolving along, around the politicians of God. I've been able to break this down basically into three, corruption, impoverishment, and the mentally, and the, the military mentality, which, uh, they have at the moment, you know, in the force. Um, so we still have, if you go into the corruption and all of them are still tied towards the politicians. I'll give an instance for the COVID reliefs, you know. It's an act of wickedness, you know. Most, for instance, more recently, the, just yesterday, the, the British government pumped in extra fifty billion uh, pounds into the economy to be able to cushion the effect of this COVID nineteen. But I can't see any reciprocal, uh, 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 what, uh, maybe act from the Nigerian government towards that. Now, the individual, uh, individual, uh, private sectors basically came, came out, made some of these donations and whatever. And now we all see, we've seen what of, what has been happening around the COVID, that's a, that's very, that is, is a lot of wickedness. Then you begin to look at the impoverishment. If you look at that, the way they've been able to impoverish people, most of, is, is this a new kind of a new slavery, new form of slavery? You know, look at during the time when we were hard, we're doing this, uh, uh, during this, uh, uh, the, the ongoing, the protest. You know, there was kind of a divide and rule policy that people wanted to use. You see people from the, people in the north making a demonstration, even people say, yeah, we support this, we want SARS. But everything, so you begin to look at that, and then look at even the police, the training. Police are now turned to thugs. Normally, a policeman is supposed to be your friend. You can't have a reasonable conversation with the Nigerian police. Most of them can't even speak a very decent language to you. So everything is more like aggression. So you begin to look at that. And then we also, uh, looking at the military mentality, we are, which I was talking about, we also, we talk about, uh, uh, we believe in civil rights, but it's all lip service. Who, look at the discussions, though, even the presidential, uh, when the presidential speech, no mention for once about the Lakey massacre. Not for once. No compassion. And then
Hey, Ralph, I'm giving you just twenty more seconds. Thank you.
Yes, please. Thank you very much for that. And then you look at the back and forth of denial. People say it's of the governor, the military say it was the governor, the governor say it was the military. These are not these things, these happenstances doesn't, don't really happen in a very sane environment. So it's some, it's something that we have to look at ourselves, look at ourselves in the mirror, and then be able to take a decision on this. That's just my basic contribution on this. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, sir. That is noted. Mister Steven O'Gubon, I, I see your hands up. And of course, like you mentioned, you were, you served in the police and you would like to make a contribution. You would be allowed to do that. I'd like to go to our guest speakers briefly. Madam Asa, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay. And then what about the Cornell? Cornell Stanley Lambo. I think he's muted. Kindly unmute yourself, sir.
I'm here, madam. Thank you.
Okay, 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 sir. So, um, do you want, um, I would like to put the questions together so you could respond. That will save us time. Okay, now, um, before I call on Steven, can I have, um, Zubee and Boyful? Your question, please make this, let's do this within a minute. Thank you.
Alright. Okay, thank, thank you very much. Um, mine, mine is actually more of a contribution than a question, and I will just go straight to the point. Um, and this is in line with the, the suggestion that Cornell Lambo made in respect of increasing the manpower of the police. Um, I just want to propose a strategy. Um, I am a veteran of the US Air Force. And, um, I had the privilege of serving because I served through the Air National Guard, which is a reserve component of the US Air Force. So I got all the complete training as a combat engineer. I had opportunities to serve in different parts of the world, Israel and all this kind of places. But yet I was still able to maintain my civilian job. How does this work? Every Wednesday, and I mean every Wednesday, citizens join the Air Force at the Lakeland Air Force Base and are trained as, and they are all trained as full-fledged Air Force men. And they, all they just need to do is, once a month, which is one weekend a month, they go for what we call the drill, which is where we just go to reenact our training. And then you are required to serve two weeks in the year. And your civilian employers are by law required to release you at any particular point in time that you're needed. Now, what is the advantage of this? You are able to bring in more professionals, albeit not serving fully, but basically serving in the military with all the skills, bring in the skills that they also have from the civilian world, the training they have from the civilian world, the discipline they also have from the civilian world. And then they create, for the lack of a better term, a kind of elite, a, a elite military group that have all these disciplines that share the trauma and the pains of the civilians and are full-fledged military people. So what happens? Every two weeks in the year, you have a set of military, uh, 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 personnel who serve the military, and then after two weeks, they go back to their civilian job. How can this play in the Nigerian situation? If we institute that type of stuff, I know they have the special for, police, but
But what? Have we lost you? Okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead. Okay, we can't hear you. I think we're losing you.
You're able to have bankers, you're able to have people who work in the oil companies, you have people who work in different parts of the economy, join the police force, are trained like the police, and are able to use their training to serve the society. That way, you'll be, you'll be surprised that you have over in
Observers of both parties.
Okay then, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, before I last someone else to come on, um, to our guest speakers, if you feel there's something you need to say, or quick contribution you need to make, kindly just, just let me know. You could just chip in. Because I would not be able to see, of course, we understand how this works. So I would not be able to see because there's a billion thing I'm trying to make sure works out here.
I was just gonna say that the ideas for what can be done, I mean, there's, um, Steven O'Gubon
Yes, please. Yes, I'm here.
That, that, that was Zubee, that was Zubee O'Boyf, uh, Boyful.
I know. Steven in our comments said he had served in the Nigerian police force before migrating to Australia, so it would be good to have him speak.
Okay, to hear him. So let me
Go ahead.
Do you want to say something? Yes, Steven, Steven, yes, go ahead.
We are asking to know what it means to be a policeman in Nigeria. I, I served in Nigerian police force for nineteen years. I, as, as an humble man, I joined the police force with the love as a young man to make a difference. I went to the university, I had master's degree. And yet I suffered promotion disadvantage simply because of my name. Until I was lucky that I went on peacekeeping and after, when I went to peacekeeping, I told myself, no, 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 this is it. I left in two thousand. And in order to convince myself that I wasn't the problem, I had to join the Australian Army, and I was the second person in in, in chosen to become an officer of the, uh, Her Majesty. I served Australian Army for four years. Having convinced myself that the problem is not me, it's my country Nigeria, I left and I'm lecturing in school. What it, what does it mean to be a policeman in Nigeria? Very, very pathetic, sad. It is the country you have that it would determine the kind of police you want or you have. Nigeria is structurally wrong. There is a problem in Nigeria. Lamo de Lawala, who was the final E F C chairman, was my contingent member in peacekeeping. All of them, um, we know ourselves very well. It was in that peacekeeping that the actual content of what Nigeria means came revealing. We knew what our Hauser brothers did. They had opportunity to get an allowance. They betrayed all of us and got allow, that allowance. They did not tell any person that is not from the north. I told them, so look, Nigeria is an express, is a geographical expression, is a failure. So what we're discussing now, we're looking at a very small part of Nigerian problem. We need to get it right. The country is designed to fail. And we're talking about here an innocent policeman who lives in the worst barrack ever known in the, in the history of mankind. Have you gone to police barracks to look at how those people live? I was, uh, a- after I've served the Nigerian
Sorry, Mister Steven, can you possibly just sort of nail, sorry to, uh, do your work, Rose, but I think because I, I, I've given broad, like, what is specific you served on it? We've seen the pictures, we see it. But from someone who was inside, is there any other insights you can provide beyond what we, we've seen that there's
Yes. The, the, the insight is that we have to humanize the police force. You know, it, for, for, the most important thing is to understand that these people are disadvantaged themselves. They can't help themselves. Even a policeman after serving the police, serving police force is treated by his colleagues as if he's not a human being. First and foremost, we need to return the police to the regional area, eh, to the regions. You know, it has to be controlled from the lower, from the lower, uh, I mean, from the states or whatever structure is, the way it is described is not going to work. If we like, want to train them, give them, it is not going to work because it is, has to be a localized police force for you to work. That is the way it works in Australia here. They put, even when I'm in army uniform, walking, when I see a policeman, I'm scared because it's the policeman in Australia that has the power, not the soldier. So, yeah, we gotta get it right from as a structure. It is an institutional problem, not a, a quick fix. We're not gonna quick fix Nigerian police force. I'm being honest with you. The recruitment is wrong, the training is wrong. Nigerian police force is designed to achieve a, a targeted interest. It is not the people's police force. It is a police force. Even our commission, our DPOs and our, uh, our, our, uh, our commissioners, they have different agenda. To the extent that as a crime, as a, as an ice beat keeper, I was colluding with my DPO to sell it the ice beats. That is how terrible the country is. It is all about survival. So we are going to fix it.
Thank you.
This is a moment of truth. You would not know how damaged we are until you leave Nigeria and live in a sane society. My friend was a, he's also a policeman. I pulled him out of Nigeria. He was a, he was in charge of, uh, 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 where, uh, this, uh, countryment. Oh, selling the, the wear, uh, police uniform to policemen to, to, to make a living. We are all graduates. The country is broken.
Okay, you know, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Steven. You, you've made your point and we really do appreciate that. One of the things I, I got from your statement is that Nigeria is structured in a way that it would fail. A friend of mine, Benin, would say Nigeria is structured in such a way that it cannot work. In my over ten years with the N T A, when people say, Rose, why is N T A the way it is? Why is it that it's, it's unclear? Oh, you know, you people do dry programs and the likes. I said, just look at Nigeria. Look at Nepa. Look at, um, Niger. Look at everywhere. So that is why we're having the same problem. But the good thing is that there are people who are coming out to, are willing to make the change, who believe that Nigeria will work if we all try. And my opinion is what we basically need is education. Let it be a must. If you do not go to school, you go to jail. From educating everyone and making sure power and health and everything else in place, I'm sure there would be a turnaround. Just saying. Okay, so am I opening the floor for Uchana in Noli? Uchana? The floor is yours.
Yeah, thank, yeah, thank you, Rose. Um, I appreciate all the contributions so far. Mine, I just want to bring another perspective, um, by asking a question. Because listening to, um, Mister Biola Owaje de Nascapo, his opening remarks, and also to the guest speaker, um, retired Colonel, uh, Stan Lambo, we realize that absence of, um, consequences for actions is a critical, um, contributing factor to, uh, impunity of both police forces and every other forces in, in Nigeria. So, but we also know that it, it sometimes the, the police has actually made efforts to take matters to the level of prosecution. And we see frustrations from the Nigerian judicial system creating obstacles. Referencing, uh, the case of the killing of, um, six members of the National Association of Sea Dogs, who were killed, um, some time ago, who were killed sometime ago. The matter actually got to prosecution. And, um, at the end of the day, transferring of policemen from one place to the other, uh, maybe complicity, internal, um, complicity within the police force, lack of commitment to diligent prosecution and all that. At the end of the day, years down the line, that matter is yet to be resolved. Uh, they tell you there is no, is, uh, investigating police officer to continue the prosecution and all that. So what is the role of the judiciary? What kind of, uh, judicial, uh, judicial reforms need to be implemented within Nigeria to support whatever minimal contributions that the Nigerian police force has presently considered is willing to offer in terms of ending impunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And before I call on our next, um, contributor, um, to our guest speakers, do you want me to call on the next, uh, contributor for his question? Or comment, or you want Do you want me to call on the next, uh, contributor for his question or comment, or you want to respond to him?
No, go ahead with the next one. So we group it together.
Okay, so Uch- Uchena, okay, Kule White is next, as a matter of fact, yes. That was Uchena Noli, so Kule White, you're next, the floor is yours. Kule? You, please unmute yourself. I see you unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
All right, thank you, everyone, uh, you know, for this wonderful conversation we are having around, uh. Police brutality and the rest. My, my comment, mine is not actually a question, is a, is a kind of comment or an addendum. I think the special focus for the Nigerian populace is. Is the issue of impunity. How people get away with certain things without consequences. The law is there. So my contribution is quite intertwin and much related to, to the last, uh, you know, uh, comment made by Uchena. We have this law. Why is it, why is it so impossible in Nigeria for us to uphold? You know, and get, uh, you know, justice in line with our constitution. Many, many issues abound. Oh, investigation getting abandoned, issues getting unresolved. We have this law. What is the problem? So the political elites and the judiciary, for me, they are the major problems. We can talk about police, uh, you know, funding, you know, not having training whatsoever. It is not a lances for them to go to the street and start killing. It's not a, it's not a liberty for them to have gone and start extorting innocents, you know, citizen. Even anyone does that, or any, any of the police officers from working, they should be meant to face the law. Do we have a law in Nigeria? The answer is yes. Why is it not working? Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Kule White. Please, can you respond to our guest speakers? Can I have, um, Cornell first? Cornell Stan Lambo, sir? That question borders on security. Hello, can you hear me? Madam, madam, ilokun, are you there with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, Cornell, as a matter of fact, you know, Cornell was trying to speak. He's, he's muted. Okay, yeah, so he has unmuted himself. So, sir, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, well, I would react to the gentleman. Yes, let me just quickly react to the gentleman who spoke before the last or so. I think we've got our own peculiarities in Nigeria, which, uh, we must see. How we're able to, you know, uh, come around it to address some of our problems. I have always recommended that, look, it is important. That for us to achieve some level of reforms within the security sector. There is a need to go into all these contracts. Opportunities for retirees and some other, uh, key experts outside the military. That could come in and be of some assistance to us, you know. I've always talked about the role which I think some retirees could even play. By virtue of, um, real area, uh, 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 deployment, so responsibility. Uh, all these are in a way to see how we're able to meet up with some of the manpower issues we have. And, um, when we talk about proper training for the police. I always want to say, look, can we start first of all with the selection process of the police? Uh, you, you can't pick a man from under the bridge who have spent nearly all his life under the bridge. And bring him to the police college and say you want to train him as a policeman. Where do you start from? How do you buy those basic home training? He would have been able to acquire from his mom and his parents. Which should form his very foundation in terms of discipline. Before we begin to talk of what we build upon that. So you bring in somebody who you actually have nothing to build upon. You know, eh, 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 we're Africans. It doesn't, it, it does not cost him anything to slap an old woman. Unlike a situation where if you grow up under the set of situation I grew up with my mom, when she draws your ears. You will know next time, you can never repeat that. You know, things like that. So we must first of all look at our selection process, which on its own has been highly rubbish. Given our situation here, highly rubbish. I am made to understand that there are times when recruitment into the police is hastily done when election periods are approaching. Why? Politicians in government want to bring in individuals who probably will serve as their head and boys. So hastily they are pushed in, hastily they are pushed out and posted where they want them to be posted to, you know. Serve a particular purpose. We must ensure that we begin to do things the right way. When we are done with the selection process, what is the curriculum? The training curriculum for the police officer. It was appropriately articulated, for Christ's sake. The police officer in such a curriculum should be made to understand in the course of his training, certain responsibilities which he owes to the public. How he relates with the public. It is important. Okay, and, um, like I mentioned, you might reach, oh, okay, all right, all right.
Oh, that's beautiful. I was, I was gonna give you thirty seconds to do that. So go ahead, please.
Okay, uh, 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 I must say this.
Yes, so go ahead.
Yeah, eh, yes, I must say this quite emphatically, that, look. The security sector in this country is facing great challenges in five areas. Funding issues are there. Manpower issues are there. Training, logistics and equipment, finally his welfare. If we touch on these five areas. In whatever reforms we are doing concerning. Within the security sector, you would be addressing nearly all the problems you have. Each of them needs a great deal of work to be done. Some of us have done far reaching background works on it and there are available papers for discussions on things like that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, and we do hope that they will look into it. So for those who are just joining us, that you heard the voice and of course you've seen the image of Colonel Aston Stan Lambo. He's a retired Colonel with the Nigerian Army, a military defense officer, immense operational. Experience in defense and security consultant. For, um, although, of course, is an in-house analyst for major political media houses. And defends research organizations across the world. So, um, I would like to call at this point our next speaker. With no other person than Oluseu, Oluseu Anikulakwakuti. Known to many of us as Sheu Kuti. And like we do know, Sheu is a musician, a singer, and the youngest son of the famous Afrobeat pioneer. Fela Anikulakwakuti. And like I mentioned before, he joined us. That Sheu comes from a long family line of human rights activists. His father, we do know, is a Pan-Africanist, is, uh, uh, a political activist. His uncle, Baker Ramsom Kuti, was a medical doctor and of course, Doctor Rep, Doctor Baker Ramsom Kuti. Was a medical doctor and he is, also, he was also acknowledged for his work as a human rights activist. And most importantly, his grandmother, Fumilayo Ramsom Kuti, is an educationist. A politician and a women's rights activist. And of course, she was, she advocated for Nigerian women to. You know, the Nigerian women's rights to vote and she became a noted member of international peace and women's rights movements. Ladies and gentlemen, an apple never falls far from the tree. Sheu Kuti is al- has also taken part in major political rallies in Nigeria. And has made a lot of impact in that line. So let us welcome Onu Ashiwo Anikulakwakuti. Sir, the floor is yours.
Hello, everybody. Uh, you don't have to call me sir, I just call you sir, it's fine. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to be invited to speak at this, um, event that is also. You know, part of my lineage with my uncle cousin, Wadishonika, who is, whose name is, who this is always in honor of. So I'm happy to be here to discuss on impunity Nigeria reforms, reactionary, we Nigeria better. You know, the headline, you know, for me, I'll be brief, I'm just coming from my radio show, so that's why I couldn't join everybody here, you know. At, at noon, my radio show ends at noon, so I had to come home and get ready for this. I'm, uh, uh, I'm gonna start by saying, uh, I don't really know what other people have touched on on this issue. You know, but impunity in Nigeria is the bedrock of the nation. Nigeria itself as an idea, you know, was one of impunity, you know. Where a group of outsiders, you know, just decided by themselves. You know, and they said we believe that, you know, the British had the divine right. To govern the world, as they claimed, you know, in the sixteenth and seventeenth century, when they embarked on their. Imperial goal of conquering the world, you know. So Nigeria itself was created, you know. By impunity. Hence, impunity is a behavior that's always been rewarded by those in control of Nigeria. You know, and one thing was, understand is. There is no reforming impunity. It's still gonna be impunity. You know, there's no way you can fix the Nigerian police force as is today. Under this, uh, same leadership. And exactly, not only their physical form, also the fact that the, their consciousness also dominates society. You know. The problem with Nigeria is that we reinforce the slave master and slave relationship. That our colonial masters used to train the first Africans that they used. You know, to govern this country. You know, Europeans didn't govern Nigeria by themselves. They had to train other African people. To read and write and carry fire and walk with them and things like that. So the relationship those Europeans had with many of those our grand, great-grandfathers and grandfathers have been normalized. To the extent that it's even called African tradition. You know. And many of these people do not even practice any kind of African tradition, except it comes to this oppressive interpretation. Or what they call respect. You know. And what did this simply mean to the eyes of the colonialists? All of us here were little more than slaves to them. You know, and. One of the characteristics of a slave is not to express themselves, right? A slave has no right to express himself. You know, so when you even look at people and how they raise their kids here. It is that same impunity, that same slave master slave relationship in our homes where our kids are never allowed to express themselves. Because they respect that, that is not respect. When you deny your kids the ability to express themselves freely, you reinforce a slave mentality in that child. Because when, no matter how you describe it, only a slave is not allowed to express themselves. Irrespective of the corrective measures, the trainings that we must give our children. You know, expressing themselves must not be one of those things that. Uh, we are suddenly using to train them. You know, so it goes into our homes because it has been normalized in our society, you know, uh. There's something, I was reading Chuenzo and there's something very profound he said in his book, The West and the Rest of Us. That the fact that African society did not need a lot of the systems that we have operating in our countries today. You know, so for example, the banking system as it is today, eh, the legal system as it is today. The medical system as it is today was not something that was traditionally African. Many of the people that rose into these positions, you know, were those closest to the colonialist. Trained in dark way and it was a relationship, you know, that did not. Uh, validate the effort of the African, really, to the extent that it should be or it was because it was not one of equals. So it is that spirit that dominates our society. You know, many people talk about police welfare and police training, right? Some of the best trained Nigerians are in the military and police force. Because contrary to what we think, many police and military people tend to go for international training. And many Nigerians are not exposed to. They tend to go to Europe and America to be trained in advanced countries. On policing techniques. But it doesn't mean that those trainings are encouraged to be reflected in our systems here, you know. When people say, oh, police don't follow the law and all those, mm-mm, police don't follow the law when it comes to do with poor Nigerians. When it comes to do with Nigerians without connection, you see. Because for the elites, first of all, they have police in their convoys, so they cannot even experience, experience police brutality. You know, many of their workers are able to have, eh, afford this police protection too. So, and then even in the case where they do not. If the child of a Nigerian elite or a Nigerian big man is beaten up by the police, the man will get justice for that child. That police should be reprimanded. He will call his friend in the army or his friend in the police and they, they make the call that Nigerian law book will be dusted and opened against that such a policeman. You know, so it is actually not the entirety of Nigerians that experience, you know, the impunity of police. You know, it is actually a class issue. It is the issue where the police and the elites are willing to collaborate. To oppress the poor and working class people of this country, you know. And there is no way that, oh, reform can stop that kind of oppression. Reform in this case, and that's why I don't understand, the heavy kind of confusion to me, but reform is actually a reactionary. Uh, approach to ending the kind of oppression that dominates our society. Yes, so for me, I truly believe that Nigerian political class, for example. There are also some of the best trained Africans in the world. Maybe some of them are not educated, but many of them have gone to, look at somebody like Saraki, is trained abroad. All of them have gone to good schools and they've come from good homes with lots of money. And they are also, you know, drowning in money. You know, so that means their welfare package is probably some of the best in the world. But does their behavior match that? Does their behavior to the people match that background that they have of wealth, of comfort? Of good upbringing in their homes by their parents? You know, because the Cornell was alluding to people raised under the bridge, not being able to have the good basic discipline. Needed for the police force. Our politicians are raised in the homes of some of the so-called best Nigerians. And look at their behavior to their home countrymen. Stalking in domain, away from hungry people. There's no reform in such a behavior. The only thing that can change these people in Nigeria is to take power from them. And we are lucky in this generation that this is not twenty years ago that we're having this conversation. We are having this conversation in the age of democracy. Where we, as the people of Nigeria, can politically organize ourselves. Not to seek reform or from our oppressor, you know. But to actually take power from our oppressor at the polls. This must be where Nigerians concentrate the bulk of their effort today. Because right now, after everything that has happened, two distinct groups have come out. That is the group that is saying, we are going to negotiate our, eh, we are going to negotiate with our oppressors. Basically saying, we want our oppressors to save us. And a second group that is saying, no, we will organize politically to take power from these oppressors, to deliver to ourselves those things that I would believe we deserve as motherland people living in Nigeria, you know. So what am I saying by everything I'm saying here, is that Nigeria itself was never created for the benefit of Nigerian people. Uh, since even after our so-called independence, those machinations in Nigeria that creates that reality has not been addressed, has not been challenged in any way, shape, you know, or form. To the extent that many people are saying they want to divide Nigeria, forgetting that regionalism was our first political system in this Nigeria, and there was still a coup against that system. What were the reasons for the coup? Corruption, nepotism, debt, destruction, violence, the same things happening in this so-called federal Nigeria happened during the time of regionalism, let's not, let's not try and romanticize the past. There are most people also that want to separate themselves from their brothers and sisters. When you ask them, do you want to separate from IMF, they will say no. Do you want to separate from World Bank, they will say no. Do you want to separate from Coca-Cola, they will say no. You see, they never want to cut the strings of imperialism in this country that is leaving Nigerians with actually a little bit of their country, not the whole lot of it. You know, how much percent of Nigeria is run by foreign interests? Nigeria is basically seventy percent, I mean, our telecommunications are all foreign. Our entertainment, uh TV companies, mostly foreign, oil companies, mostly foreign. Everything that is Nigeria, food, everything, mostly foreign. Electronics, mostly foreign, we don't even compete, we don't, we do not make the bulk of the money that we generate in this country as Nigerian people. You understand, and these people are not willing to change that. We have people that are willing to stand as gatekeepers and receiving a percentage on the suffering of their people instead of developing the country. What is missing in the conversation of Nigeria is a conversation of national development. You know, you can read the newspaper all day, the fact that we can't go to school is not headline. The fact that children are dying of hunger is not headline. The fact that women maternal mortality rate is still high, mortality, uh maternal mortality, mortality is still high, you know. Uh infant mortality as well, high. All these things don't make the news, the state of our public schools, when last did that make front page news? It is the discussion of our elites that also dominate the news, so what does that mean, the media is also complicit. So until this kind of spirit is con- completely exercised from our society, you know, this is not the issue of saying, yes, uh, uh, the police force, you take a train, no. It is people from the best homes in Nigeria that are destroying Nigeria, if we're gonna tell ourselves the truth. So let's not blame lack of home training for what is going on here. There is spirits, there's an agreement that we, the people of Nigeria, must destroy. It can no longer be start of school, it can no longer be game as usual. We, we as the people of Nigeria can no longer go to work for them in their banks and assist them in laundering the future of Nigerian people in we. We can no longer go and fill the civil service and assist them in corrupting the ministries. We can no longer do these things, if we truly believe that we want things to change, it must start from us. Impunity is in the, is right, is right in our society. From our homes, that's why I use our children and ourselves as the first example. We validate, we validate, you know, the oppression of society as the middle class of Nigerians because we are also the conduits through which oppression gets to the people of Nigeria. You understand? Because without the support and the willingness of the middle class, of the professionals of this country, you know, to assist our oppressors, there's no way that oppression can get to the poor people of this country. We are the lecturers in the university that take money for marks and then rape girls for marks too. Okay, we are the students that go to our university and become eh the feared eh thugs inside university against our own fellow students. You see, because the spirit of those things are validated within society. How long has violent cult activity in our universities been going on against fellow students? It's been going on for so long, I know there have been done to stop it. So you come to the street, you are a student in your home, then you go to school, so people are pressing you to school, you come from school, you enter the street, the police are, I'm here waiting for you there to oppress you, you keep your money in your bank, we are waiting there to oppress you, you go to eh civil service, we're the ones using bureaucracy to oppress you. In every state of life, the middle class of Nigeria is complicit in the oppression of the poor. So there's no way the poor rise up against their oppressor and not come through the middle class and professionals of Nigeria. If we do not begin to exercise this spirit of impunity that we have been sold, it's not our fault. The real reason is because we have also been educated by the oppressor. It is the school we all send our children to, because as we abandon the public school, that we cannot control the curriculum, we don't look at it, we don't check it. Everybody just send their child to the best pub eh private school, believing that you are dodging ignorance. Or the ignorance comes to your front door in another form. They not realize that private school is not the solution to ignorance. Our jeeps, we forget bad, you know, so all these things that we do, you know, for me, is what enables impunity in our society. You know, we don't really want to change it because we believe that maybe we are all oppressors in waiting. So maybe that's the reason, but if it is not, if we truly believe that we want something to change in this country, then reform is a reactionary position. We must begin the revolutionary activity of organizing ourselves to take political power from our oppressors. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mister Onuwa Shewu and Nikula Kuti. Okay, from what I can deduce, we are all guilty. The walls stops at everyone's um door and of course, there's so much we can all do. And like we all know, questions for our guest speakers, haven't seen any hands raised, questions, comments?
Speak a bit.
Yes, please, madam, go ahead.
Great, great. Hi, Shew, good to see you. Um, add two things to, to what you said. Slightly disagree that um the issue of police brutality is strictly a class issue. Because I know people, I consider myself middle class, um and I also consider myself, if you broadly define Nigeria as elite as to education and who can read, write and um pay for basics, I consider myself member of Nigeria's educated elite. But I have friends from police brutality. Um, I have friends who've been, had to go to jail. I have friends who've pursued, um, tried to get justice and were not able to get justice. I have known technology community last year, when the tech community started talking about N S A S as well, because it began to affect. So you have, um, for, for that, at least last year, a big thing was on young men with laptops who were going freelancers. For me, I don't think that's a classic, if you have a laptop and you have as a means of income, people who were coming out of Printivo, the printing company, and they're saying, look, this is my office right here. And they were still carried by S A S. Someone who works for N D State government in a N D State government car with license plates, still stopped. Access Bank ID with an Access Bank card. So I just want to say that, yes, we might think of it in that way, and if, if just more people um on the lower end of the socioeconomic strata will be affected, but I want us to be clear. Which is why the protest had the resonated the way they resonated. I mean, you and I are quite familiar with organizing protests, trying to get people to come out, is it corruption, is it any of those lots of issues? Or political donated across socioeconomic strata, because every strata could see somebody has put a gun on you and said, I will kill you and nothing will happen. It's not differentiated by class. And I completely agree with you, regardless of our, that we have or disagree with. That the only structure we have to engage, supposedly, as I said, that um Nigeria has been described as a quasi-military police state. Um, but the structures that which we have to engage are democratic structures. So if we want to use those structures to change those who are in positions of authority, then we need to begin to talk very clearly about political participation, educate people, uh educate citizens a- along those lines. And then two, I wanted, last, let me notice two, sorry, Rose, last one. I wanted you to verify, you had said some people want to negotiate and then some people want to change. And what negotiating, I'm not aware.
Okay, Shew, would you like to respond to that?
First and foremost, first and foremost, no matter what the Access Bank and N D, whatever people carry, the laptop technologies, it is not as bad as what the poor in Nigeria would have suffered in that same instant, somebody still went to politician to build them. Go to Kirikiri and see how many people are there awaiting trial for just walking on the road. See what I'm saying, you know, justice in Nigeria is that you got out from the issue. If you can pull yourself out of the issue and nothing happens to you in the hand of police in this country. Me and Phelazo have been slapped by the police, but I will not consider that, I will not consider that the same thing that is going on with the people of this country. I am still privileged to the extent that even though the police slap me, I slap him back, we fight, we go to politician, everybody will come. Yeah, they'll tell him, apologize to him, apologize, everybody will go there with countless of cases, you see, in fact, I feel that that was, there was an elitist tone to the whole N S A S issue. Because S A S was the only police organization that was brutalizing everybody across the classes. Not those ones that have Mopu, but we that we bought Benz, that we bought some nice car, have a nice job, that we believe that money has saved us from Nigeria's problem. S A S was there to always smack us back into reality, you know, so everybody hates S A S. You know, the Yahoo boys that do their criminality for the sake of wanting money to get out of poverty so they can be big man. You know, S A S slapped that shit, you know, slapped that out of your face, you know. So everybody has issue with S A S, you know, but not normal police, not military problem that has destroyed Nigeria, you know. So for me, there was the elitism of that, you know, like N S A S, N S A S, N S A S, okay, then what? Though, then what, does that, that's why prisoners are breaking out from prison, they say prisoners. I think all the people breaking out are waiting trial, they've been there for nothing for years, just stood up on the streets, you know, so the reality is different. The reality is different, let's not even kid ourselves, you know. And now, there are people negotiating with this government, that's a fact. I don't, you know, there are people sitting there in the panel, in this illegal panel of the accused investigating himself. There are people sitting down there, that means they endorsed it, there are people saying we should follow it, what you go and get results from. My family sat down in the panel after a thousand soldiers walked from the barracks in a batty to our house and bumped it down, threw my grandmother out the window. Went back to their barracks, government constituted this kind of same panel, at the end of the day, they seized our land. You see, we lost the land there till today. I said they didn't know, that if they knew the soldiers, they would give us, they didn't know who the one thousand soldiers were. And that was the end of the story, but we were the ones that still lost our land at the end of it. So when I tell N S A S people that, don't worry, let them finish this, father, don't be sure that your freedom is secure. And then it is, father, I find out that you are the one that was going to change. You know, so definitely, there are still groups of people among us in this Nigeria that feel that we can change our oppressors or in some way reform oppression or in some way, you know, perfect oppression in the way where people are oppressed and they are able to live with it. You know, as they have been doing for years, why they now, you know, that's why when uh people are burning things and breaking shops, suddenly the Nigerian middle class found his voice against destruction of property. I was surprised because when Fashola was destroying Otoro Magwe, nobody said anything. Those were properties, you know, those were businesses, you know.
Okay, okay, sorry, just one minute, I would like to allow um a question to come in at this point, please. And I also want to know what's the meaning of Otoro Magwe, please.
Oh, it's one neighborhood like this that eh, eh, was he embodied or Fashola, I think he's embodied, just when they are
Okay, okay, yes. In Bad, in Badagri.
And they've been doing for, eh, so Oluwa has gone to do his own in Takuabey too. They went and also destroyed the artist village, they've been doing it all over Lagos. Nobody says anything, you know, it's fine, business, I mean, they are developing Lagos, you know.
Okay, so let, let us allow um Onuwa Shewi Abayomi, you have a question, please, thirty seconds, thank you very much.
Yeah. Hello?
Yes.
Hello, yeah, goo- good afternoon.
Yeah, good afternoon, go ahead, thirty seconds, please.
All right, all right, my own, my own contribution is that uh for to control police brutality in Nigeria. It is necessary for us to have what we call community policing. You know, community policing is a kind of uh control mechanism that will make a police not to do the way they like. And the other thing is that they must have a kind of training that gives them the kind of orientation and philosophy that they are to serve the Nigerian people. Because the kind of philosophy they have is that they have the gun, they can oppress. And by that co- community policing also, because I, I, because everywhere, when I go outside everywhere, I see that every one of us Nigerian people, everyone over, all over the world, have the tendency of being tyrant. So I feel that co- community policing is a kind of control mechanism that will shut me this tendency of being tyrant or, or being dominant to, to, to oppress other people. I feel that community, for instance, it is too bad for the person guiding securing me not to hear my language. It is, it is funny for somebody securing me to, with, with the kind of system we have now in the poli- in the policing in Nigeria. Somebody
Hello, I think we lost you. Yes, yes, thank you very much, you've made your point, sir. And, and it's just some technical glitch there, but you've made your point, thank you very much. You talked about community policing is understandable. I would like to quickly go to Idé Owojón, Idé Meko, please, you've got thirty seconds, thank you, go ahead.
Okay, um, uh, good afternoon, everyone, I just wanted to make a, a few, a couple of comments, I mean, uh, the Nigerian police force was um, was set up in nineteen thirty largely as an occupa- uh occupying and exploitative force. Uh, compared to twenty years of democracy, uh complete um, uh, um, I would put it disorientation, uh, the, the Nigerian police force was not set up to support democracy. So we have to go, first things first, we, we need to go back and, and, and work that, that entire structure of what the Nigerian police was meant for, or what is meant for in a democracy. Uh, and, and so, uh, I think that's one of the areas that we should really focus on. Secondly, I, I truly stand for the devolution of the, of the police system in Nigeria. Uh, federal police, the state police and a local government police, that needs to happen. Uh, thirdly, uh, the fact that we have too many overlapping agencies performing policing with lack of intelligence sharing, um, you know, what I call it, the Nigerian police force, the Federal Safety Commission, N S T D C, uh, B I O, et cetera, you know, there must be an opportunity for us to see how we can optimize
You know, anybody that is security
Sorry, if you are not made to speak, can you remain muted? Can you, thank you.
Yeah, so I think there's, there's, there's a whole big opportunity for us to optimize uh the, the, the security apparatus uh within the country and see how we can also unbundle uh that, that police structure uh along the uh, the, the true federal stock that we're, we're, we're always uh pushing for. So first things first, the structure of entire security apparatus was not designed to support a democratic ideal, so we need to go back and fix that. Those are my comments on it, on this whole thing, thanks.
Oh, sorry, Chiemeka Ozumba is next. And please, before Chiemeka comes on, I would like to let us know that this discussion does not end here. So this dialogue will continue as a matter of fact, after this event on the Wale Shoyeka Lecture Series social media platforms. So the videos, comments will be posted, and of course, you can go there and put your op- opinion. We can never dialogue over these issues like too much. We keep talking about it, the change which we all desire will definitely come, so, Chiemeka.
Yeah, thank you very much, Rose, um for recognizing me to talk. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Okay, so I, I just want to say thank you to eh Shew Kuti. I, I, I believe honestly that he hit the nail on the head, okay? Um, the topic of discussion is impunity and it was asked for him to say you can't reform impunity. Like my grandfather would say, you cannot wash Like my grandfather would say, you cannot wash shit, you can't, and I'm sorry to use uh the gutter language, but it is absolutely. And actually, the impunity that is bedeviling.
Hello.
The, the impunity that is bedeviling Nigeria is fully rooted in the middle class. And that middle class is me and all of us in this program. The, I, and I, and I tend to call it the grammar speaking class of Nigeria. Just like the white men moved out and we all wanted to move into the G R As and then have our own savants live in the boy's waters that we are living in before the white men leave, leave. That is exactly what the middle class in Nigeria is doing. Because if you look at it, the problems that has led to the N S A S um uh problem did not come to fore until it started affecting the middle class. What is, what is, what is A T M? What's A T M all about? Our waiting trial matters. There are people who have been in prison in the name of our waiting trial not being able to bail themselves because they can't afford it because of the class they are in, who's not had riots. And this has been going on for years. Yes, we have lawyers who do pro bono to help themselves towards becoming eh and saints and all that, and that's all well and good. But until the middle class understands that the day, the day Nigeria will go to flames. They are the ones, they don't own eh the private jets that they can hop into and escape from Nigeria. They probably don't have the red or blue passports with which to escape. And when they, when, when, when that fire comes, they will burn first. So the middle class needs to wake up and come out of what they think is comfort and realize that they have to take seriously the problems in Nigeria. Because those problems are already decimating the poor. It's very interesting the way people took the, the, the so-called um uh um lootin of palliatives and all that. Now, I am not condoning luthers, I'm not condoning arson, I'm not at all. But the, but the point that was missed in that discourse is that a hungry man has a thousand reasons why he should go and loot. A, a, a hungry man will loot, a man who does not have food in his kitchen for his daughter will loot. Only those who will not loot are those who probably have access to those who are looting. Like we all have friends who are looting the, the, the Nigerian economy, the middle class, all of us here speaking all this grammar. We all have access to people who are actually rooting Nigeria dry. And we are happy with the Peters they give us in contracts and when we go to club to drink champagne with them.
Okay.
Turn a blind eye. So just there finally to say, the middle class will need to wake up to solve the problems in Nigeria, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Chiameka Ozumba. Okay, so I must um let us know that um our last guest speaker is having problems um joining us from Wari in Delta State, that's the south-south of Nigeria where he's also attending a valedictory service for a deceased son. And we're making arrangements to ensure that we hear the legal side of reforms. Um as such, we'll bring him back to the Wale Shaka Digital Town Hall at the earliest opportunity. Of course, like you know, this is an ongoing conversation and if you're wondering who that our guest speaker is is no other person than Mister Udomidi Apata, the president of the Nigerian Bar Association. So of course, this is a continuous series, so we're gonna have him. And if I, do I still have, now I'm having a lot of hands raised. I do know that a male E B, um Clarkson has been waiting, so um I'm just gonna have your question and maybe take one or two, then I'll let our speakers weigh in very quickly. So go ahead, Mister Clarkson. You have thirty seconds, thank you. Unmute yourself, please. Mister Clarkson?
Yeah, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, kindly unmute.
Yeah, mine is, mine is not, is not, is not a question, mine is a comment. I think that the, the, to cope police impunity in Nigeria will look at the entry point. Now, you and I know that for the past fifteen to twenty years, those who go for police recruits are mostly miscreants. And it's scary to say it, some of them are known criminals. These are the only people that go to police recruitment. Now, when these people go to police recruitment, what do you expect from the police? They go there and refine their criminality. So the entry point for me should be at least someone that has a diploma.
Okay.
But if you have, yes, if you have, if you have a diploma, I'm talking about educational standard now, if you have a diploma, it will be very hard for somebody who has gone through the who has been in the forwards of university, on the forwards of a, 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 and needs to a, a, a higher institution to be exhibiting such impunity. You have some educational sophistication that will prohibit you from doing what these so-called criminals that are recruited into Nigerian police as recruits are exhibiting. Now, all children of elites don't go to recruits, the best they can go to is maybe A S P course. So it's only these criminals that go to recruit, that, that recruit, and they are the ones that are, 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 are constituting this impunity. That's just my, 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 my contribution.
Thank you very much, beautiful, precise. So next is Mister Oshiba Joe Festus. Thirty seconds, sir. Okay, if you're not coming on, I'm gonna, I'm afraid I have.
Yeah, I'm there, I'm there.
Immediately I call on you, please do unmute, unmute yourself and go straight, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much now. Uh but I just have a contribution and then the thing is that this issue of uh reform, impunity is something that is so endemic because I just don't know, some of our state institutions. Last month in Lagos State, what of a policy that even B I U that I cannot do common driver license except it's erected through an officer that will now charge like times five of the money. So every institution of government should, it's not only hence. All political administration said that we should just advocate for uh redistribution of that power. Because our oppressor, they have educated us to just be behaving and misbehaving whenever we go down to power. I just believe that uh God will help this nation, but it's something that has to be holistic, not only police. Last month is doing rubbish. Every R S P I is, they are looting, they are doing rubbish from their abusive power and without techniques. So that's my contribution, thank you very much.
Thank you, okay, another precise speaker, Tobe Chukwueki, thirty seconds, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um good afternoon, Rose, and good afternoon, everyone. Please, my questions go straight to um Sheukuti. Um I want to first of all, thank you for that um apt analysis you gave. But my question is this, please, I would like you to give me a definition of who is a Nigerian and what should a Nigerian look like? Given your historical background as you link it up to the impunity and the police issues and the middle class. Because I believe that until we understand who a Nigerian is have a conceptual definition of who Nigeria is from our own narrative and not what the colonialists gave, give to us, we begin to appreciate this country and do everything in earnest to make our country work. Please, I, I would like you to give me an idea of who is a Nigerian from your perspective.
Okay, thank you. So let me have George Okuma. George Okuma. Unmute yourself and make a contribution. Okay, so you're not coming on, Emma Roland or Imma Roland. Unmute yourself, make a contribution. George, I'm sorry, you lost your position. Can I have Emma Raymond? You can unmute yourself and speak. George, okay, you go ahead, unmute yourself and speak, please. Olajide Akin, Akinosho, go ahead.
Yes, um I just want to make a contribution, you know. And the way I see the problem we have, you know, in Nigeria is not just, you know, a problem with the police. It's a problem of system. The system we have in Nigeria is a corrupt system and I, I would explain what I mean by that. Everything that is done in Nigeria is based on quota system rather than merits. Not until we start using merits to employ people to position, we would always get it wrong. And that is something that we need to work on. The system that is used in terms of, you know, getting things done within the country is not good enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much and I'm sorry, I, um with that, that'll be the last question we'll take here because we, we've um overgone the scheduled time to end this um event. But um I would like to open the floor for our guest speakers, Mister Shou, your question, I hope you've got your question. And if you're still with us, please, can you respond to that?
Question.
Of course, our other um guest speakers could take their, um their questions one after the other. So go ahead, Shou, thank you.
Well, um I would say the Nigerian, the Nigerian is still an unknown, unknown entity. You know, um that's why our political leaders always use masses when they address the people or they don't see, you know, the citizens of this country. It is actually the duty of the business and political elites. Actually, the business elite in Wu's hands, a lot of the wealth of the nation, a lot of our commonwealth has been accumulated. You know, that commonwealth is supposed to be used to develop this country. It's supposed to be used to create the Nigerian, you know. Because it is only through national development that national culture is discovered. You understand? It is when we do great things together, that is when we truly understand one another. People always mistake unity for understanding. No country in this world is truly, in this, in the full sense of the word, united. You know, like you go to England, you think, I mean, United Kingdom, you see, you think they're united, the Scottish hate the English, the English hate the Irish, the Irish hate the Welsh. But they understand one another because they built something great for themselves. So until our elites stop being an elite of consumer, they are great at consuming. This will not be an elite that is great at building, you know. It is in this process of building the nation that they will build the Nigeria. You know, that is when we even know that we truly hate ourselves and we don't want to stay together. We've actually done something great together, like building this nation, you know. So it is the elite that have refused to create the Nigeria, they refuse to invest the billions of dollars. Many people like Dankutie or Ted allow this, for now, we are what they need, that they amass all this wealth based on our commonwealth. You know, only using it to, for personal development, for personal development. None of them use it for uh national development, actually investing the things that will make this nation grow. So that's what is missing. This is why we need the people of this country more now claim that citizenship by ourselves from this elitist class because it is obvious they are not interested in creating the Nigeria. So it is our duty now to do that, to take power from them and create this Nigeria that we all want to know, you know. I think that, that, that is my answer to that question.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, someone is saying, um someone says, said, um that is Chiameka Ozumba, okay, saying Shou, you're always on point, okay? I completely agree with you. Okay, that's it, that's good. So um George Okuma, um I would allow you thirty minutes, sir, please, just go ahead.
Thirty seconds, you mean?
Oh, I, 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 I'm sorry.
Sorry, thirty seconds, okay, I'll, 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 I'll keep to term. Um thank you for the um topic, um it's been an, an engaging conversations. I, I, I just have a few comments to make, perhaps an area that we need to uh uh focus on i- in subsequent um conversations that we would have. Now, we are talking about uh police reform and N S A S and all of that, but there's something that we need to focus on. You know, there's a fundamental problem with the, with the political setup of Nigeria as a country. You know, and this dates back to the days before the colonial masters and when they came and up to this point. I've had to speak to quite a lot of uh uh friends that Nigeria as a country is an emergency state. We've had in the past, the political reform conference meetings that uh proposals were released that didn't lead to anything. So I think we need to sit down as a nation and, 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 and have a conversation because there is a lot of ethnic uh uh groups, a lot of people, uh 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 groups, Christian religious groups and all of that. Everything is just so not in place. I think we need to begin to have a conversation as to how we want to live our lives as Nigerians with all the states coming together and everybody not minding their religious uh 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 background, ethnic backgrounds to have a conversation on how we can live together as a country. I think if that is done, you know, every other aspect of our, of our existence as a nation would be fixed.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you, thank you. Our program will be joined to a close pretty soon, but I'm going to allow our last two guest speakers to have their say. Can I let, um can we have Madame Yemi Adamolekun? Can you weigh in here, madam? To round off your final words. You can unmute yourself, please. Okay, Colonel Asens, Stan Lambo. Can we hear from you, Colonel Asen? Unmute yourself, sir, I can see you, just unmute yourself. Colonel Asen, you're speaking, we can't hear you, unmute yourself.
Okay, is that okay now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Um.
Yes.
Yes, thanks so much. Uh I'll be very picky at it, I just want us to look at the way forward. Um as a matter of fact, I'm one of those who believe that um my generation has failed this country. Including the generation ahead of mine, because all along when I was in school too in the eighties, people like I V V told us we were future leaders. Till today, I haven't attained leadership position as far as I'm concerned. Um uh 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 well, to the younger ones coming behind, I must say, we have failed you, whether I participated in that or not. Now, what do we do? What is the way forward? Thank God for the orderly protests that took place recently, the twelve year protests. Thumbs up for the Nigerian youths, they should not just stop there, they should take a step forward, begin to look at twenty twenty three. By now, it was declared to them how much numerical strength they have, how they can convert that numerical strength to political strength. They should be aware by now that out of two hundred million Nigerians, they constitute a hundred and thirty-five million Nigerians, making about sixty-five percent of our population. So they've got what it takes to overthrow whatever system that is on ground through the ballot box. By now, they should be acquiring their PVCs, getting themselves organized, getting a platform if possible. If you don't want to offer a new platform, wherever you are, you just know you need to bring in a youth. Understand the sort of chapter you are bringing in so that this country can have a new lease of life. The future of this country is in the hands of the youths. We are already on our way out. Do not allow my generation to reunite tomorrow, seize the opportunity, seize the moment and create a future for yourself. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, sir. Do we still have Madame Yemi there and do we still have um Shou with us?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, Shou, final words, please.
Uh well, my final word, you know, I, I have to thank the Colonel very well for his great advice, you know, but um also you know, I don't think um youth is the only solution because youth is not an ideology, you know. All of us that are youths now will all grow old and what happens, we can't participate again. I think what we need is a pro people, a class, a truly class uh driven movement that uh uh unites the working class, the professionals with the poor people of Nigeria, you know. And this movement is what I believe can truly liberate Nigeria, you know, uh most effectively, you know. Because also, many people are advising young people to pick up arms, revolution, revolution. I always say, even though we are going to have revolution, we must organize first. Without organization, there is no true revolution, you know, because you cannot do a revolution for the people. Without organization, there is no true revolution, you know, because you cannot do a revolution for the people. You have to do your, your revolution with the people. So let's organize with the people first, as in Nigeria, then decide what road we want to take after that. You know, to this, uh, task that is truly be, be ahead of us today, all Nigerian people, you know? We must begin to build that bridge, you know, and stop aligning with the oppressor and with the people of Nigeria. I mean, both with the people of Nigeria. Sorry.
Thank you very much for that.
My wife brought my food. Can I, are we done? Can I go?
Yeah, just, yeah, yeah, you're fine, but just, yeah, just hold on because at this point, I would like to call the leader of the organizing team of this, uh, great event. So, uh, for appreciation and his closing remarks. Ladies and gentlemen, please let us welcome Mr. Essie Folami is the NAS second mate.
Thank you very much, uh, Rose. Um, on behalf of the National Association of City Dogs, especially the Wale Shoyika Lecture Series team, I just want to say thank you so much. What an afternoon we've had. And it's obvious, the conversation is not going to be a one-off thing. It's gonna be something that needs to keep going on. We've had some thought-provoking, uh, speeches. Thank you so much, Colonel Stan Labo. Thank you, Yemi Ademolekun, Ademolekun. My brother, Sherukuti. So it's okay. Thanks. But the conversation here is what we do with this, where do we take this? And that is the ambition of, uh, WS Digital Dialogue. This remains something, a platform where we keep engaging ourselves and, uh, we'll be coming back with some other aspects of this. In the process of, uh, this going on, contacts have been made with us that know there are some other aspects and people want to talk. We will provide that enabling environment for this conversation to keep going, bearing in mind the objectives of this particular, uh, topic that we'll have today. On behalf of the organization, I want to say a very big thank you to one and all and have a very best weekend. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. That is Mr. Essie Folami, the NAS second mate, the leader of the organizing committee for this event. Okay, and I would also like for us to know that this virtual interactive session of the Wale Shoyika Lecture Series, um, will be released to the public on the social media platform of the Wale Shoyika Lecture Series. And that is where the conversation continues. I would like to say really, really big thank you to our guests today, Colonel Asens, Stan Labo. Thank you very much, sir, for your contribution. It is needed. And I hope the several papers you've written can be submitted to the federal government and of course, to the Inspector General of Police. And we really do hope they will look into it, or maybe the Police Service Commission. And then of course, Oluwashiwo and Nikula Pokuti. Um, what am I gonna say? You're always on fire, um, always on point. Thank you very much for taking time out to give us those wonderful, wonderful contrary, you know, contribution. And many of us never thought, okay, go this way. Of course, we are the problem, the middle class. And of course, the lower classes in Nigeria, that was really, really beautiful, the way you put them. And of course, Miss Yemi Ademolekun, who is the executive director of Enough is Enough. Thank you very much, madam. We have gained so much from, um, your wealth of experience. And to of course, our viewers, those who stayed with us from like what, way over twenty half hours ago, thank you very much for being faithful. And of course, like you know, this conversation continues. My name remains Rose Peter Graham of Rose and All Sides Life on Benin Television here in the United Kingdom. I say thank you very much, everyone, and have a fantastic day. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Thank you.
You.
Thank you. Good night.